The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
...of the world and also the littlest of the best in our community, especially Chris Johnson, who passed away unexpectedly last week, who is currently in Scranton City Council, we ask that he keep his family in his very dreams this most difficult time.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here. Dispensment reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Controllers' Report for month ending May 31, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3B Tax Assessors' Results Report for hearing date held June 6, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3C Tax Assessors' Report for hearing date held June 28, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3D Check received in the amount of $61,797.13 from the Scranton Housing Authority, which is payment in lieu of taxes for the city of Scranton.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3E Minutes of the Scranton-Lacwanna Health and Welfare Authority's regular meeting held May 18, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3F Scranton-Lacwanna Health and Welfare Authority's combined financial statements for the year ended December 31, 2016, and independent auditors' report.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3G Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting held May 17, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3H Minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting held May 17, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3I Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting held May 17, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3J Minutes of the Composite Pension Board Meeting held May 17, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3K Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting held June 21, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3L Minutes of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee Meetings held November 29, 2016, January 31, 2017, February 28, 2017, March 28, 2017, and April 25, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
The Fellows Park Sunday Concert Series will continue. On July 2nd, The Frost will be playing. This will begin at 5:00 PM and run until 7:00 PM. On July 4th, The Fortunes will be playing. And again, these concerts run from 5:00 to 7:00 PM in Fellows Park and West Side. It's a free community summer series. Bring chairs or a blanket, and they will be held rain or shine. Thank you.
This evening, an executive session was held regarding pending litigation. Next Tuesday, July 4th, City Hall will be closed in observance of the holiday. DPW crews will not be working that day. Refuge and Blue Recycling will be one day behind next week. The television recycling program has ended as of June 26th. DPW crews are still picking up the remaining TVs that were on the list that were called into the dispatch office. To date, over 700 televisions have been collected. I would like to thank Director Gallagher and the DPW crews for all their efforts in making this a successful program. Next Thursday, July 6th, council will hold a work session with the business administrator to discuss the issuance and refunding of the city's general obligation bonds, which is item number 5D on tonight's agenda. The work session will be held in the governor's room commencing at 4:30 PM. Also, a 5B and 5C, a public hearing will be scheduled for next Thursday, July 6th, to hear testimony for each liquor transfers. They will be held at 5:30 and 5:45 PM prior to the council meeting. Downtown Scranton Business celebrates Independence Week, July 1 through July 7. Locally-owned businesses in downtown Scranton will take over Scranton Tomorrow's Instagram account in celebration of Independence Week. Scranton Tomorrow will give downtown businesses its Instagram login to post pictures and promote businesses. The takeover kicks off on July 1st with posts from businesses located on North Washington Avenue, Wyoming Avenue, and Penn Avenue. Wednesday, July 5th, will feature businesses from Adams Ave. and Linden Street. Thursday, July 6th, will feature businesses on Lacawanna Avenue, Spruce Street, and Centers Street. Independence Week is a national annual campaign encompassing July 4th to engage local businesses and citizens in celebrating entrepreneurial spirit and the freedom of our local businesses and body. Indy Week also is an occasion to recognize small businesses' contributions to the community and to affirm citizens' roles in shaping their community's future. For more information, contact Leslie Collins at Leslie@ScrantonTomorrow.org, or you can call 570-963-1575. We all encourage and celebrate our independent business owners in the city. Please take the opportunity to support them during this week.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Fay Francis?
Are you gentlemen familiar with the section 66-1984 of the City Administration Code? I just handed that to you. Are you familiar with it? Do you know? It's about...I'll read it. Professional services contracts. The city of Scranton will publicly advertise for professional services when the payment for such is expected to exceed the threshold of $19,400 in one calendar year. Professional services shall include any profession or occupation which requires the issuance of a license to practice that profession or occupation within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. All contracts must be reviewed and approved by the city solicitor and signed by the mayor and the controller, or their designated substitutes, and attested to by the city clerk. Now, here's my question. For these professional services, did you realize that anything over $19,400 must come in front of council for approval? Pardon me? Well, then why did the mayor and Attorney Shrive hire Attorney Abrahamson without bringing this matter before the council? He received $20,000 a month for 10 months. Why did this not come in front of city council?
I don't know. That's a good question, and...
Has anybody ever asked the mayor this?
I have asked for several documents, and after reading the newspaper, apparently there is no documentation. So, I'm not sure. I mean, I still have additional questions about it, but I don't know, to be honest with you.
Well, in my opinion, I mean, these are all my opinions, but I think they'll bear truth and time. I think this is, the mayor and Attorney Shrive just wanted to try to hide the facts here and scrutinize and just hide all this stuff and just sneak it through. So, to me, it's very illegal. So, would you consider contacting Attorney General on this? Make him aware of this illegal activity by Ned Abrahamson and their law firm? I mean, I know you have it, but I think this is an illegal matter. He did not come. He got paid. He was paid this money illegally, and nothing was done. What do you intend to do about it? Do any of you intend to do anything about this? If not, then I would say you're complicit. I mean, how could you sit there knowing something was done illegally? Didn't come in front of council for approval against the city code? And you're not going to do anything about it?
Well, I don't, to be honest with you. I don't know if it was, in fact, illegal. I mean, I planned on asking our solicitor, Mr. Menora, how they were able to do that, and I don't know. That's why I would be asking that question. But I don't know that it was illegal.
Well, it wasn't right. If nothing else, he should be brought in here, and the mayor should be brought in here, and Jason Shrive should be brought in here to answer these questions in front of the people. I mean, that's our money, and he did everything behind closed doors. He didn't even, he wasn't even aware that the city paid him. He thought the sewer authority paid him. I mean, he's not, he was, he's out of touch with reality, this mayor. And the sewer, the sewer money, the deals I read about in the paper today, that's paying down debt. From my understanding, I believe that the mayor has already paid some of these debts down from that sewer sale. Well, I thought he wasn't able to do that. Isn't there a statute or something that says that that can't be done until the sewer authority is completely absolved? And the sewer authority is not absolved, and yet these, some of these debts were paid down? How is that possible? Another, in my opinion, illegal happening between the mayor and this sewer deal with the lawyers and everything else that he deals with in the city. So, I'd like to see, you won't make a motion, though, about the Attorney General? You're just gonna, could you ask, Bill? Could you please ask what he thinks about...
Well, I plan, I plan to ask in motions when it gets to my turn to speak.
Could I ask?
I'd have to ask...
Attorney Menora?
Councilman Wexler.
Could you tell me how you would understand it when the mayor and Attorney Shrive did not come in front of city council for something that says the city code said they must for something over $19,400, and they did not?
Accepting everything you said is correct, and I don't know that it is...
Well, I read the code from the state.
I'm talking about the contract itself. Accepting what you've said is correct, which I don't know to be true or not true, then a contract like that probably should have come to council. It's an open-handed contract. It doesn't say it's $150,000. It says $20,000 a month. It might be a contract for one month. It might be a contract for two. In this case, it was a contract for 12. But as it was contracted, it was for one month only. It was month to month. So, that's a $20,000 contract. So, I'm not sure what you're saying is correct, that it should have come before council, because it ended up to be more than $94,000. It's really a question of...
$19,400 a year?
No, no, wait, let me finish. It's really a question in the contracting, at the beginning of the contract, what is the value of the contract? It's $20,000. It may turn out to be more, but it's a $20,000 contract. And I think that's what the solicitor and the mayor are going to say, and I'm not sure that, I haven't looked to see whether that's correct or not correct, but I think it is.
Even if it were correct, it's still over $19,400, and that's for one whole year, and he got $200,000 for 10 months.
Yeah, I think, I think the best thing for us would be to...
Pardon me?
The best thing for us would be to have Solicitor Menora contact Solicitor Boils, find out about it, because Abrahamson does have a professional services contract with the city for labor. He does have a professional services contract with the city for labor that has been approved by council.
But this was for the sewer deal. I'm only referring about the sewer deal.
Correct, but he does have, he does have a professional services contract for, for other issues.
But am I wrong in saying that he should have a separate contract...
Correct.
For the sewer deal for $200,000?
Yeah, it may also have something to do with the fact that he was paid by the sewer authority, not by the city.
He was paid by the city.
Well, that's still, that's still up for questioning.
That's the problem. Yeah, we don't know that.
He was, I'm sorry, he was hired by the city. I don't think he paid.
Correct. He was, he was hired by the city, but he may have been paid by the sewer authority. So, I don't know if that has something to do with it as well.
But if it's a city lawyer hired by the city, then I would think he'd have to go by the city administrative code.
I don't disagree, but we will have Solicitor Menora...
And you'll get that answer too, so who's...
Yes, we will.
Paid him.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Les Spindler?
Good evening, the council, Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Councilman Perry, when I was here two weeks ago, I thanked you for getting that hole filled up on Dorothy Street, and you said, oh, you wouldn't do anything. You just got in touch with the people, but at least you took the initiative to get in touch with the people. I've been coming to these meetings for many, many years and asked for things to be done, and no council people took the initiative like you do. So, I think you do deserve credit on that part.
Thank you, but I'll tell you, I work with these guys all the time, not just on Thursday evenings, but through emails, through talking, and there's a lot of activity going on by everybody here, especially the people in our office every week. So, it's, you know, it's definitely not a one man band by any means, but I'll take the compliments when I get them, because they're not often, so I'm just going to end it and say thank you.
Well, I have another problem down in this, not directly same area, but down by the ball field. At the end of Elizabeth Street, it's a dead end that runs into the field. There's a drainage ditch. The end of that drainage ditch, there's another storm drain. There's no lid on the storm drain. There's like a metal rim that goes around it, but it's like a 15-inch, approximately a 15-inch opening. Some young child could fall into that.
I'm not, I mean, I'm familiar with Elizabeth Street, but not that, not that end of it. Was, do you know, was it ever there? Has it been missing recently?
Oh, yeah, it's been there for a long time. I just noticed recently that there's no...
It just went missing?
There's no cover.
Okay.
I think that's a real safety hazard. I don't know who would have to be contacted with that.
Okay, well, I'll, we'll put that motion for you.
A young child could easily fall down that. Okay, next. I watched the news last Thursday night after the town hall meeting, saw some highlights, and Councilman Gahn, you were totally out of control. I mean, you set a bad example for council people in this city. You were told to leave. You didn't leave until some larger gentleman started heading towards you. You blamed the mayor for everything. The mayor, whatever the mayor said that night, you wouldn't have been happy with. You said he played politics, appointed people to the sewer authority. Every mayor appoints people to the sewer authority. Where were you when Chris Doherty was appointing his friends to the sewer authority? Where were you when Chris Doherty was putting all his friends and relatives in the sewer authority? He put more people in sewer authority for jobs that didn't exist than any other mayor ever did. Where were you? Nowhere to be found. But every little thing this mayor does, you will find fault with it. You're a hypocrite. Okay, in the paper today, it said some of the money's being used to pay down some of the debt. I think we're in much better shape right now than we were four years ago. The, our bond rating is better than the Doherty administration's bond rating ever was, and we're paying down some of the debt. If this, I don't know if the sale was good or not, but I was one who was totally against receivership. The sewer authority wasn't sold, we'd be under receivership. I don't want my taxes raised 125%. The receiver could come in, raise taxes as much as they want, counselor or the mayor couldn't do anything. That's not what I would want, and I don't think a lot of people in this city would want that either. Next thing, this has nothing to do with city business, but kudos to Governor Wolf for signing into law tougher laws against animal cruelty. I've been complaining about that for years, that animal cruelty laws are not nearly as strict as they should be. People get a slap on the wrist. Now, they're going to do jail time. I think that's a great law, and kudos to the mayor. To the governor, I'm sorry, not the mayor. Lastly, brought this subject up a few months ago about Princeton University losing their nonprofit status, and asked council to look into it, and I still yet to hear anything. That's one thing I mean about things I bring up that might be good for the city that council doesn't look into. I think that's a real serious thing. If we could get the university to contribute more than they are, I think that would be great, but why isn't council looking into this? President Wexler, can you answer that?
We have, we have reviewed it. It's, it's a...
Why, what are you waiting for?
It's, it's an issue of the county, the school board, and the, and the city. It's, it's an issue, it's combined with everyone.
Well, Princeton University lost a lawsuit. I, I don't know why this council or the law department can't look into it. Can't you get in touch with the law department and have them look into it?
We have a pretty full slate with other matters, to be honest with you.
You don't think that's important? To get the nonprofits to contribute more?
I do think it's, I do think it's important, but have you seen our agenda of what we have to accomplish?
I think this is probably more important than anything on the agenda tonight.
I, I disagree.
If the university could contribute more than the, what, 100 and some thousand it contribute every year, which is nothing, that's important. Seems like you don't want to take the burden off of the taxpayers, and maybe that's why you won't reelect. Thank you for your time.
Bob Ballas?
Evening, council, Bob Ballas. Just briefly, I'd like to say a remembrance to L.A. Tyrone from WILK that passed the way, and I think we owe him a lot, because he always treated each and every one of us fairly whenever we went on his talk show, and he'll be sorely missed. Getting down to business tonight. Has the sewer authority been dissolved and all bonds paid?
No.
Pardon?
No.
Okay. So, the sewer authority is still in existence?
The sewer authority is in existence to close outstanding business.
Back in, let's see here. December 1st meeting of 2016, under ordinance number 68, city council authorized the city of Scranton to approve the request of the Scranton Sewer Authority to terminate its existence upon the payment and discharge of all outstanding bonds by Scranton Sewer Authority. Have all the bonds been paid?
That I don't know.
Okay. Well, let me tell you what the problem is here. If that's not been the case, and they have not fully complied with the Act Art of Existence, Out of Existence filing, they can't have given the city of Scranton or Dunmore a dime, not even a penny. Because if they did, it would be illegal under number 5712, money of the authority. That can only be used by the authority under that ordinance, and I'll read it to you. Prohibition, prohibition. Money of the authority may not be used for any grant, loan, or other expenditures for any purpose other than a service or project directly related to the mission or purpose of the authority as set forth in the Articles of Incorporation or in the Resolution Ordinance established in the order, excuse me, the authority under section 5603 relating to method of incorporation. In other words, what this tells us, the money could only be used for the sewer authority and sewer authority projects only. What's happened here is the city and everybody, under ordinance 68, filed a certificate of for an out of existence, they were to pay all their bonds and clear up their mess. They can't give a dime if there's not an out of existence filed and bonds not paid off. This is something council should have known if they paid attention when approving the December 1st of 16 meeting under what I already read, the rules of council. What you have done, and what everybody has done, Mr. Gahn, I'm going to lay this on you, because when we had the meeting with the sewer authority where you blasted in at the mayor, were told to sit down, and then come back blasting again, very unprofessional, and you called it a circus. My friend, you were the circus ringleader there, okay? You weren't there representing us as a councilman as you kept barking out. You were there representing yourself as a private citizen, because in order to represent yourself as a councilman, you needed two other people there to make a forum to come there and say anything. Mr. Evans made statements. There were more questions than answers. I didn't see anybody else get up there and speak. We, the public, did. And if you had taken time, and you bitch about transparency, and read the math, the asset purchase agreement, as I have, maybe you wouldn't be yelling so much, "You want transparency", because you should have all read this agreement prior to signing a sale agreement of the sewer authority assets to the gas or water. You put the cart before the horse. Now, you're yelling, "You want transparency"? You can't ask for something you didn't comply with. Now, the big issue is, and your solicitor is sitting right here, have you taken the money illegally from the sale? Because under the ordinance, the sewer authority had to be dissolved before they could give you one dime. And if you didn't do that, gentlemen, I strongly suggest each and every one of you, including the mayor and all the high-priced lawyers that represented us for millions of dollars, better seek counsel, because I believe you've done something illegal by accepting that money. You had no right to get it. And I'm going to give you one more other thing here, and the, I want to read this to you for a second. The Auditor General of the Commonwealth shall have the right to examine the books, accounts, and records of any authority. He doesn't need your permission. He doesn't need to be asked here. This is black and white, his job. Right now, there's the potential of a criminal crime that happened, but it must be done by the Auditor General first, and then he could pass it on if he finds something was wrong. This is a very serious issue in this city, because you've got money you're not entitled to, and if that's the case, the Auditor General needs to come in. It's in this here, black and white, right here, that it's his responsibility, and I'm forwarding a letter to him, to come in here on behalf of the citizens of the city of Scranton to investigate, as the Auditor General, the taking of money that we believe, under your own statements right now stating that the sewer authority has not been dismanded, you've taken illegal money, gentlemen. Fred, cautiously from here. Mr. Gahn, when you want to come out, all due respect. Get your ducks in a row before you come representing us and barking out. And Mr. Wexler, you would have learned this in the past if you weren't so arrogant and shutting people up.
Thank you, Mr. Ballas.
Because the most important thing you'll learn in life, sir, respect is earned and not demanded. You work for us.
Thank you.
We sure in hell don't work for you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballas.
And that's why you got kicked off this seat, because you're going to respect people.
Thank you, Mr. Ballas.
Don't ever thank me, because I never want to thank you from somebody that I think was totally incompetent to sit in that seat.
Thank you, Mr. Ballas.
Because I just read what you did wrong as the president.
Thank you, Mr. Ballas.
You put this whole city in jeopardy, big mouth. Pay attention when you're speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Ballas, but you should take some advice that you just gave Mr. Gahn. You just did the same thing. Phil Jackowitz? Phil Jackowitz? Thank you, Mr. Ballas. Thank you, Mr. Ballas.
Good evening, Scranton City Council. Good evening, Kathy. Good evening, Council Stenographer Laurie Amel, and Mark back there on the camera. Good evening to all of you. Bill Jackowitz, South Scranton residence. So far, $43 million is going to, from the sewer authority sale, from the way I understand it, is being used to pay down debts. Is that correct?
I, I don't know the exact number that you're using, but yes, paying down...
Yeah, it's 43 million. Now, after that debt is paid down, we're still going to owe $103 million. We're still $103 million in debt after we paid this 43 million. Where are we going to get the rest of the money from, considering we, we sold all our assets or released all our assets? Where are we going to get the $103 million from? Does anybody have any thoughts on that idea, or has anybody even looked into the matter?
The, the idea is that the interest rates are lower, so we will be making payments against that debt.
Well, I understand that, but how long is it going to take to pay, pay down $103 million?
I would imagine...
When you don't have any revenue coming in from...
I would imagine it's quite long-term debt.
Yeah. I mean, you know, we've been suffering now...
But every, every city has debt. There are no cities that...
Well, yeah, but they don't have $103 million.
I, I don't know about that. I, I might disagree with you on that.
I don't know too many cities that do. I don't know too many cities that do, and I've lived in a lot of cities in this country.
I would think cities have more debt than you think.
Okay. The town hall meeting basically went the way I said it was going to go. The mayor was sitting up on the stage by himself with his bottle of water, and he was asking the question, answering the questions. Problem was, he didn't have very many answers. And the second thing is, he made his biggest mistake when he went to the audience and started asking the people in the audience the answers to the question. Big mistake. He should have never have done that. We didn't elect those attorneys who were sitting in the audience. We elected Mayor Bill Cartwright, and he was the one who was sitting up there drinking his water, and he's the one who should have been answering all the questions. Okay, the Abersons deal. What do you get for a $50,000 campaign contribution? You get, there is no letter of engagement detailing the scope of the work to be performed by the firm, no any formal contract available for the review. There is no specific documentation of what services Abraham, Abrahamson provided while being paid a flat fee of $20,000 a month. The rate, which adds up to $200,000 over 10 months, was calculated by Cartwright and Shrive, who believed it to be a reasonable amount for the work it entitled, Shrive said. That's what you get for making a $50,000 campaign contribution to the mayor's campaign. Again, going back to the town hall meeting, I'm sorry to say, it really wasn't, wasn't very much to be proud of. I mean, the mayor sat up there and he just didn't have the answers. I mean, it was his, it was his idea to have the town hall meeting. He was the one who suggested having it. You would think he would have at least came in prepared, because he had to have known that he was going to get asked a lot of tough questions. And he was asked a lot of tough questions by a lot of people. I think there was 19 speakers. And he was asked a lot of tough questions, but he didn't have the answers. And he's the mayor. He's the commander in chief of the city of Scranton. So, as commander in chief, he is supposed to be on top of everything. I mean, he didn't, he didn't even know who hired Abrahamson, Abrahamson. I mean, he, he didn't know anything at all about the closing deals on the sewer authority. He, he just didn't, he just didn't know anything. I mean, I hate to say that, but it was kind of an embarrassment as a citizen to sit there and watch my mayor struggle that way, because he just, he just didn't have, he was not on his game that day. Thank you.
Ron Elman?
It's a hard act to follow after tonight's action here. Reminds me of the old days a little bit. I really feel embarrassed of this council. You're not the council that was elected for the people of this city. You're letting us down by heaps in bounds. I just find it unconscionable that all five of you went ahead and give this $3 million grant to this contemptible school that has taken millions of dollars off our tax roll forever to repair a building that they took off the tax rolls three years ago. What is your thinking? How could you do that to the people of this city? Last week, I said, everywhere you look, there's money needed. The kids swimming, the swimming pools themselves, the streets curbs. Every place in this city, there's a, you could have put $3 million to use. You give it to this lousy contemptible school, like I said, that has just raped the city year after year after year of taxable property. Then you have their employee, and that's all Mr. Urboso is. He is an employee of that school. Look what he's done to the city. Even got his own law firm involved. I guess all these people had to get their, enriched their retirement funding, and he had to get in on the bandwagon. What has happened here, the people of this city were swindled. That's the word, swindled. Nobody going to argue with me about the use of that word? That's what happened to us in this deal. But it's done and over with. We're not going to get any money back. Nothing's going to be done about it. It's just a shame what, what you've done to this people of this city. Urboso should have been run out of here the day he came in, because he was, he had no business being appointed and taking over the city for the university, for Lockwood College, with their plan to sell everything and raise taxes. That's all that's happened. And Mazzoni, you know my feeling on him. He is a complete waste. You can't find anything for the, for the people of this city that he's done. One thing, not one thing, for the people of this city. All he does is run around here and make commitments that he's not even supposed to. I keep hearing the word on Fox News this week about collusion. What do you call Mr. Urboso and the relationship with Mazzoni to get the $3 million grant? If that's not collusion, I don't know what is. You've had these people lead you guys around the nose. They, they have destroyed this city. I just, it's just unbelievable what's going on, and nobody seems to care. I watched last week the meeting on television. I couldn't get down there. I found, you're just hypocritical. You let all this happen to the people of this city, then you have a big show at the last minute against the mayor. The mayor just seems to be a, I don't know. I like Bill. I've known him a long, long time, but he's not mayor material. He might be someday, but I don't find a mayor material. And when you see in the paper who, who contributes and who supports him, you can see, those people don't want change. We have to have change around here. I won't see it. Some of these people out here that come to meetings won't see it. But you have, you have forgotten about the young people of this city. Like my two boys, they don't want to live here. Let me say something real quick on another vein. Two weeks ago, Roseanne found three dead squirrels and a dead skunk in my backyard, that somebody had evidently put out some poison, one of my neighbors. How somebody could be so low-life to poison, to, to do this is inconceivable. The lady behind me puts out a little bunch of peanuts, and for 12, 15 years, I put out a little box of, summer, winter, in the rain, the snow, I put out a pound of peanuts every day. There's only like four or five squirrels come. We're not overridden, and somebody poisoned them. You know, people like this just belong, they should rot in hell. Thank you.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz?
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Grant resident and taxpayer. Tomorrow is June 30th. Do you know where your 2016 independent audit is?
Well, we were told on Monday that it's supposed to be here, so we'll find out tomorrow.
Well, I'm coming slumming tomorrow, and I'll be looking in nooks and crannies.
All right.
Hopefully it'll be here. Has there been any more information from the Attorney General about your request for him to come down and look at the sewer sale?
I will make some mention of it in comments.
Okay. How about the infamous notorious Noel's insurance list? That needs to be amended for the last three months. Remember?
No update on that either.
Say again?
No update on that either.
Oh, good God. Let's hope they're not paying to insure the Scranton Public Library for the seventh year. I wasn't able to attend the pension board meetings on May 17th. I had a schedule conflict, but fortunately, all their minutes were provided in this week's backup. And it was very interesting reading, because they all focused on the RFP for the third-party administrator and the fact that the original RFP did not detail the duties of an RFP, of a third-party administrator. Do we have any status on when that is going to be rebid, so we can take a look at what they're asking for?
They're still evaluating the best way to get it back out there.
Still contemplating their navels, are we?
No, they're just, it's so important, they're trying to get it right.
Okey-dokey. Well, there are other cities and communities that, that have that function. I mean, it's like one ringy dingy, two ringy dingies. Okay, interesting article in the paper yesterday. Ruling Could Impact Tax Case Against City. In unrelated case, court says home rule charters don't supersede state limits. So, what I want to know is, in the event the lawsuit goes against the city with regard to this cap on taxes, does the city have a Plan B?
I would guess not at this time.
Has anyone tried to quantify how bad it could be if the lawsuit goes against the city? I mean, how much money are we looking at taking a hit on?
I've looked into the numbers a little bit, and it would be a disaster, and unfortunately, real estate owners would be the ones that would be hurt the most.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be wise for the administration to be, you know, looking at a Plan B. May not come to pass, but one would want to be ready. Scranton School District, on June 26th, Scranton School District gets adult supervision. They're now on the Department of Education's financial watch list. What bothers me is the fact that we tend to say, P E L is saying that, you know, our financial health is improving, yet you cannot separate Scranton School District out from the city's overall financial health. There's another thing we need to have discussion on, is what's going to happen with things like our credit rating and everything else. I don't think that the outside world says, okay, there's Scranton, and the school district is not something we have to worry about. There needs to be some discussion on that, because that's going to impact the entire city and taxes, and taxes. You know, just because we have three taxing authorities doesn't mean that, you know, we have three checking accounts. It all comes out of one pot for me. And I was very impressed to see all the minutes of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Does anybody know when the next meeting is? I think the last one was May 30th. They do some good work. Okay. If we can ever find that out in future council meetings, if that could get publicized somehow. I understand they meet at the Electric Light Buildings, Scranton Life Building, or whatever that is across from the courthouse. But some very interesting things came out. I see some of the panel members, the board members, and Jean Barrett, Bernie McGurll, some really smart people, and Joyce Hatala. So, I'd be interested in observing their meetings and seeing what they have to say. A lot of it impinges on stormwater management, by the way. They may be ahead of the power curve. And reassessment. I was at the county meeting yesterday, and that was an exciting experience. But what bothered me was this morning's editorial, "New Low in Political Cowardice." While I agree with the Times Tribune in favoring assessment, I can't understand why our discussion of this issue has to get down to loaded emotional language. We're going to need, in the near future, a lot of discussions and debates on this issue, and we're going to need facts, not epithets, not accusations, you know, not calling this one a political coward and making those kinds of accusations. And I hope you, as city council, will support and propose some of these information sessions, because you have called for reassessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Schumacher?
Who has the Parks and Recreation Department?
That would fall under the Public Works, so that'd be me.
Okay. I have a complaint. I attended an event at Naog Park on Saturday night. Nobody here last week mentioned it. I don't think most people knew. It was totally embarrassing. We had Jimmy Stir, who travels the United States, well-known, and the turnout was pathetic. And the people that I know that were there heard about it word of mouth, because they did some research on it. And plus, at the end, of course, it did start to rain, and that chased a lot of people away, or maybe just at least to their cars. But I believe that is the one where Geisinger has their, pays for the fireworks. It was a beautiful fireworks display. Very few people got to see it. Why don't we hear about that? I look at the front page, the homepage of the, of the city, and my goodness, all the West Side events are in there. I mean, is that, you know, because the mayor lives there, the rest of us don't count? I mean, seriously, why are those events that we're paying, that taxpayers are paying for, not on the website?
I don't know. I'll find out, because I know in the past, they used to promote it pretty heavily.
Now, was that one of the Wednesday series, or that was, that was separate?
That was separate. And there's nothing about the Wednesdays either. Not, I don't think.
I attended several.
D P W. It's pathetic, is what it is. Nothing short of it. Why do we waste the money?
I agree.
Somebody tell me 5G. I didn't bring up my.
5G?
Agenda, yeah.
Zappa?
Okay. Does, does the, the, the next item, H, will that fully cover the comprehensive plan that you're asking for there? Or are we going to have to kick anything in?
Yeah, we're going to kick in, but, but probably one-third of will be.
I think it's 19,000 and change.
That's the next one, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's our match.
Right. 5G is authorizing, you know, the continued cooperation.
And where does that appear in our budget for 2017?
That's probably going to come out of professional services. It's probably already in there. So, yeah, it would be about one-third of what we anticipated.
Can, when we get the budget this year, can we get a list of the backup instead of just a big chunk of money for professional services? That would be, that would be helpful. Now, again, Joan brought up the, the article that was in the paper yesterday, and yesterday at, also yesterday, I should say, at the county commissioners' meeting, when the Chief of Staff gave his presentation, he talked about a decision that had been challenged by one of the, by the minority commissioners in the past. And again, this is the critical one, the court upheld the county's authority to change it, its predetermined ratio, and in addition stated that the limitation on millage in the home rule charter is preempted by state statute and is therefore invalid. Now, that's two. I don't know what our attorneys do that they don't check case law, but, which brings me, speaking of our lawyers, our lawyer on this case is apparently Kevin Conneboy, special counsel representing the city in this tax lawsuit. How much is he getting paid? And how much have we paid out so far? I know there have been a couple of hearings. Maybe you could find that out?
I believe that's, he works for the Abrahamson Firm, so I believe he's being paid under the Abrahamson Firm contract.
Well, what you believe, I would like that verified. I would like that verified, and then I would like to know what their contract is and.
I agree.
The whole thing. Then, I'd like to go back to the Scranton Parking Authority. I've been reading the report that was done, supposed due diligence on, on the sale of, or leasing of those assets. And I'm going to read, maybe next week, because it's too long to keep you, but let me just, let me just read you this, so you can think about it, and I'll come back on what my point is next week. This is an article that Mr. Lockwood wrote a while back. A firm owned by Marketplace at Steamtown owner John Basaliga will receive $348,000 a year for decades. a Year for Decades in Monthly Rent by the Nonprofit Firm to Which Scranton Wants to Lease Parking Garages." "The rent to Steamtown 300 LLC will help pay for capital projects and maintenance costs taken on by Mr. Bassaliga's firm associated with the parking spaces that the nonprofit National Development Council will lease and manage. It's among the many complex details in the stacks of paperwork that make up Mayor Bill Cortwright's parking monetization plan. This rent is on top of the $4.5 million upfront payment that the city will pay to Steamtown 300 for use of those 500 spaces at the mall, and for Steamtown 300 to no longer undercut the city garages in the monthly parking market. The city will also sell the Electric City Garage for $1 to Steamtown 300 owned by John Bassaliga and pay $2.85 million toward his $5.1 million renovation of that garage. Mr. Bassaliga's firm will lease the Electric City Garage back to..."
I don't want to be rude, but I'm going to have to stop. If otherwise, everybody else would want extra time as well.
Well, everybody else seemed to have extra time tonight, but that's okay. I'll be back next week talking about the Electric City and the agreement. Thank you.
Lee Morgan?
Good evening, counsel. Lee Morgan. Not that it matters that much. You know, there's a lot of things that I have on my mind today, but I just hope that the Republican Party puts somebody up that can run, because, you know, somebody called me today, and they weren't very nice to Mr. Stangy, because they didn't think that he was going to bring somebody on board because of his relationship with allegedly with Mr. Rogan, that you were his best man, so I guess you must be good friends. And I find that extremely troubling, because this city really needs a change in direction. And, you know, if the comments that Mr. Bullis made tonight about Statute 5612 are correct, then you've committed a crime. It's a terrible thing. And the lack of knowledge about the things that are taking place in our government, and I very rarely see you publicly ask your solicitor even one question. And I believe that when the P E L talks about where the city is financially, I find it comical, because I'm of the opinion that the city is going to lose the tax case, and the city is going to lose the double pensions case. I remember the double pensions, because I was here, and I watched the discussions take place around them. And then, unless I'm wrong, I mean, the city turned around and refilled all those positions. So, the city didn't save anything, and to be bluntly honest, we've had one incompetent counsel after another here, and you're just another one. And it's really pathetic that, you know, people have to live like this in this city. And I believe that the county commissioners are right when they say that the reassessment should go back to the public to let them decide what should take place, because I don't think there should be a reassessment, and I don't think there should be increases in taxes either. I think what needs to take place is this city needs to cut its budget, and if it needs to lay people off or do whatever it needs to do, that's what needs to take place. If the city needs to change its designation from a Class 2A city to a 3-city, let it do so. Because, you know something, it's time for the city to realize one thing. We've had incompetent leadership for a long time, and that may not change, but the amount of income that people have in this city is changing. It's becoming less and less all the time. Our standard of living in this country is dropping like a rock. The people sent a very strong message to Washington, and I think the Democrats and the Republicans in power understand that, you know, the American people are just at the end of their rope. And when you look what the governor and our state legislature have done to us, look at the pension debts and all the silliness they've created. It's just ridiculous. I mean, I don't see how anybody that we've elected could actually say they represent us with all the deals. You know, I'm not interested if an elective official can smirk in my face as he's stealing my pay out of my paycheck every week. I'm not interested in that. I'm interested in how well our government's being maintained, and to be honest with you, it's not. People are afraid of their government. They're not participating in government. They're in fear of it. And, you know, it reached the point where, like our forefathers, reached a point where they just weren't in fear of their government anymore, and they fought the biggest and the most powerful country in the world and freed us from them. So, you know, you have to ask yourself, how long will the American people allow their assets to be stalled, their standard of living to be diminished, and the political shenanigans to take place across this country? It's amazing. It's just thoroughly and completely amazing how, you know, as a child, I grew up here, I never thought the city would look the way it does now. And, you know, now we've got a mayor talking about building a splash park, and the city's bankrupt. There's no other way around it. And, you know, when you talk about, initially, there were discussions about the sewer authority being monetized to meet pension requirements, and now it turns out, well, no, we didn't want to go into receivership. But, you know, the people who don't think that in the end, when all the buildings and all the smoke clears, the state's going to march in here, and they're going to do whatever they have to do. And with all our assets gone, and with everything gone, what have we accomplished? Nothing, except made the people in this city poorer and poorer and more disgusted with their government. And when you look at the amount of people that go to the polls every day in this city, look at yourselves, because you're the one that makes them determine whether they're going to vote or not. Think about it.
Thanks, Dave. City Council, I'm Tomun Varsky. At your last meeting, a councilman asked for a resolution. Sorry. He made a motion to call in an applicant for the sewer authority. He wanted him to come and make a statement about his qualifications. The motion died for lack of a second. Apparently, no council member wanted to ask any questions or find out anything about this person. It seems like it's the pattern that this council follows. You ask no questions, you don't investigate, so you have your backside covered. I noticed that at the mayor's meeting, the town hall meeting, that only one council member asked any pertinent questions. Where were the other four? Aren't you interested in what happens here in the city? I doubt it, but I hope this next council that comes in will take more of an interest in the city of Scranton.
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, resident. Once again, hobbling up the elevator-free parking authority and paying out the wazoo. Personally, I think until they fix that elevator, it should be free, just like it is at the mall, because nobody pays over there anyway. They agreed not to compete, but, okay. Once again, with our trash bill, you hear a lot of complaints and so forth. Well, for my trash, I don't think $300 is terrible. However, we have too many bills due at the end of winter, and we have winter heating bills, and we have taxes, and you might owe taxes, federal or state taxes or something like that. We always deduct in excess from our paycheck, so the point being that it's just too many things hitting you in the spring, and it's hard to take advantage of that discount even, which is nice to be able to do that. And once again, on the trash bill, I talked to a newbie in my neighborhood owned by an out-of-town landlord, probably giving away, telling people that my driveway is public parking. And he said, "I'm not going to bother to recycle." Okay, you know, not going to bother to recycle. How about a hotline that we could call in and find out if some of these places are paying their $300 fee? Because I'm sick and tired of hearing about it. Under pay-to-throw, once again, I expect that people are not going to pay, they're just going to throw. They're going to throw it wherever they can get away with it, and then if you have that fine old easy chair that just falls apart, and you want to get rid of it, what are you going to have to pay to get rid of that? So, there's some things to think about. We have too many single-minded studies in this town. We arrive at one conclusion, that conclusion is before we ever even conduct the study. It's derived with the idea in mind of coming up with a conclusion. It's a pigeonhole. And I might have asked this last week, but I didn't, and it was mainly on the sewer. You know, a couple of years ago, I started talking to a guy down the street. We used to stop at the store together and buy Lotto tickets and things, and it struck me that he liked to buy a few too many. And he owed a $700 back in his sewer bill. $700 back sewer bill. And they were threatening to shut his water off. And I'm wondering if a large portion of that escrow money isn't sitting in unpaid sewer fees, and is the water company going to participate in helping us collect it? Because it's turn off the water if you're not paying your sewer bill. And another question I had, and I probably could get it out of, I hope he shows up again, Mr. Foley, why was the federal upgrade worthless? Because we weren't paid for that. I doubt if we're going to get paid for that in the future. And it's just a shame that 10 or 12 million dollars is poured into that. And it's not, it's not just money up in smoke. As far as the pensions, my advice is, don't promise any tax breaks. We may have to have increases. I hope not, but the fire and police have to be paid, and that's all there is to it. And currently, the best idea is to pay up Wall Street and not make any more obligations to Wall Street, because they're basically sharks. They're loan sharks, and that's all there is to it. So, thank you and have a good night. Don't forget, if you're truly unhappy with your candidates, dub you for dictator. Tyranny with inequality for everyone. Thank you. And by the way, that's with my left hand, right, Pat?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wexler. I have a couple of things today. The very first thing I want to do is, as we announced early in the meeting, I just want to give my big heartfelt condolences to Richard Johnson's family, who passed away last week. I was personally in shock when I found the news. It's very sad to lose somebody who was willing to put themselves out there as the way someone who puts himself on a ballot does, and knowing that that person was here just to make everybody's lives better is a loss, not only to his immediate and distant family, but to also the whole community. So, I was very saddened by that news, and all my love to his family in this very, very dire time. Secondly, to address Mr. Spindler's question on the Elizabeth Street drain grate situation, Ms. Reed, if we could send something down to D P W just to check out that situation. I'm not really familiar with that end of Elizabeth Street, but it sounds like something a little bit smaller than a manhole-sized storm drain that's missing a grate that was once there. Maybe it was taken off for cleaning, it wasn't put back, I'm not sure. Third, this is something that I know Councilman Gallhand and myself has made a couple of requests for, and that is for the safety of the residents in the Manuka section of the city, particularly Bernie Avenue, in the 2900, 2700, 2800 block area, where it's just, it's a racetrack. I've lived there my whole life, I know it to be so. I know we sent some correspondence out to Chief Graziano in the past about some things, some solutions, and he has responded back to us. One thing I would like to send to Chief Graziano and Mr. Postus on behalf of myself and Councilman Gallhand is a request for a crosswalk at, somewhere in the 2900 block of Bernie Avenue. There's McDonough Street and Burke Street. They both flank a section of the city that lead immediately down to a Little League and a softball park, and on the other end of that street is the Barrett Park. And it's the only field and park in that area of the city, so they're going to be crossing that street to get there. There's just no two ways about it, and there's no safe way to cross that street. This is a street that I brought up last month that doesn't have a stop sign or a streetlight for about two miles. There's a light at Cherry Street and Cedar, and that street runs right into Murney Avenue, and doesn't have another stoppage for traffic until Davis Street. And it is just, it's very dangerous, to put it mildly, and there's a number of accidents. I don't need a traffic study done there, because I know how many accidents, and it would definitely qualify for something. So, I'm hoping that since there is ball fields and parks very close there, that that would qualify us for some kind of crosswalk in that part of the city on the 2900 block of Bernie Avenue. And lastly, not like, as Mr. Wexler said, our agenda and the work that we have in the city is very heavy right now, and there's a lot going on, but I did want to touch on something that was near to my heart, and that's the reassessment, and that's been the news lately. It appears that the reassessment for Lackawanna County, which in my opinion is long overdue, is going to be put on the ballot in November for the residents and the citizens of Lackawanna County to vote for. That wouldn't have been my first choice on how to do that. But with that said, it's done. I do have an issue with that that I hope to help alleviate and address. The problem I have with that is, there's four months of lead time to the election, and I'm afraid of misinformation leading up to that time to maybe deter people from voting yes on this proposition that's going to be on the ballot. And the reason is because we have no, we have no concrete proof on what it's going to cost. All we have is what we paid for a partial assessment that ended in 2009, and numbers that I don't think have been substantiated. I think they were just kind of basically pulled out of the air. So, if they start, you know, if numbers start surfacing on what reassessment's going to cost, that's going to scare people away from voting for this. And RFPs aren't going to be giving out for this until after the election, once it's been voted on, you know, if it's voted affirmative for. And that's kind of after the fact. So, if the council doesn't have any objection to this, I would like to send a request to the county commissioners, asking for them to submit RFPs for assessment and then release the results for that before the election, so we have some kind of concrete proof on what this is going to cost us. I think that is going to be one of the biggest issues on a yes or no vote. I think that is going to be one of the biggest issues on a yes or no vote for the citizens. And I think they're going to need that information ahead of time, not wait till after the fact. So, again, if there, if there's no objection to that, I would like to make that request to the county. And I'm going to reserve all other comments for agenda items. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Rogan?
Yes, just two items, and you talk about, over the last, since, since we didn't meet last week, over the last two weeks, there's been a number of developments on the double pension issue. First, to talk about, a little bit about an action that I personally have taken, as you've probably read in the newspaper, I did file a lawsuit against the pension board for the double pension issues. And, this came out of many reasons, but first of all, frustration of the lack of answers and the lack of progress on this issue. To be extremely clear, the lawsuit, and in addition, the second issue I'm gonna talk about, which is the subpoenas, do not target the recipients of the double pensions in any way. I think we all agree that many of the people who received the double pensions were offered something they believe was valid. We will see what the state police investigation shows as to, as to how that actually transpired. But the reason for filing the lawsuit was, was twofold. One, out of frustration for the lack of answers, and secondly, if this lawsuit is successful, unlike many of the other items that have been explored, this will actually put money back into the pension fund without it coming from the taxpayers. The pension fund in the city have errors and omissions insurances that we pay quite a bit of money for, and because this appears to be an error or omission, and not criminal, from consulting with various attorneys, they have advised me that it's a very strong case, and there's a very good likelihood of being successful. If it is successful, any proceeds will be deposited directly into the pension fund, and that's more money that won't have to be put in by the taxpayers. As I mentioned in the paper, and just to reiterate, I personally will not gain anything whether the suit wins or loses, all the proceeds will go into, into the pension fund. So, again, as, as I mentioned, I'm doing that as a private citizen, but I will continue to give updates as, as that progresses as much as possible. Secondly, also regarding the double pension scandal, we had some very good news yesterday that thanks to Attorney Menora's hard work, the state police agreed to turn over their investigation on this issue to city council. I'm gonna turn it over to Attorney Menora to address the public on that a little bit, and then I'll offer some more comments.
Yes, we subpoenaed records, and the state police, through their, through their solicitor, moved to quash the subpoena based on an act, the acronym of which is CRIA, which is Criminal History Records and Investigative Act, and it keeps all of those documents privileged, and they're not to be distributed except to other law enforcement agencies for the purpose of law enforcement. That's the CRIA, what the CRIA Act is for. It has a limited, very limited release, ability for the state police to release any information in situations of hardship, without going into that. Counsel for the state police, Attorney Rongus, and I discussed this, and I explained to him the purpose that we wanted to use this for, and he was agreeable to submitting an order to the court, releasing the investigative report, but with limitations. We're going, he's going to initially draft the order, and then he and I will review it and try and accomplish both of our purposes, his to comply with CRIA, and ours to determine the facts behind the investigation that may not be available to other people. Now, that being said, the actual investigative report and some, much of the material in there will not be allowed to be made public. It will remain CRIA material, but the information may be used by us to craft legislation that would prevent the double pension problem as occurred in the past. I can't tell you the outcome of the drafting of the order yet, it hasn't begun, but I will, I'll praise counsel as we go on that.
Thank you, Attorney Menora, and thank you for all your hard work on this. I know this has been something we've been working on for, for over, just well over a year at this point, since this, this scandal broke.
Can I add one more thing?
Absolutely.
The issue of whether or not we have the right to issue subpoenas was never addressed, not even by counsel for the state police. They relied exclusively on CRIA, so that issue still is out there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And, as I mentioned, since this, this scandal broke, I have devoted much of the majority of my efforts of being on counsel into, into this issue, and really, there's two main items that I would like to have addressed. Number one, which unfortunately, because of some of the limitations with these documents, will not be addressed, is informing the public on the who, what, why, and when this transpired. Unfortunately, because of those limitations, it seems that much of that won't be able to be released. I am gonna continue to work with Attorney Menora, following an agreement with the state police on how much can be released to the public. It is my goal to have as much available as we can. I would like to be able to turn it all over, but we do have to stay within the laws that Attorney Menora just, just mentioned. But secondly, and the second goal, and really the more important goal, is to prevent something like this from ever happening again. In the review of these documents and crafting legislation, if needed, following the review of these, these reports, to put controls in place to prevent something like this from ever happening again. So, I am very encouraged, over the last, the last few weeks, the, the actions that have, have transpired, and I'm, I'm looking forward to diving into and reading these reports. More to come on that as well i- in the coming weeks. Secondly, regarding reassessment, Councilman Perry hit on this, I'm gonna talk a little bit more. As everyone who watches the meetings or attends them should know, I am a staunch supporter of reassessment, because I believe the residents of Scranton are overtaxed compared to those outside of the city. Although some of my colleagues may disagree, who also support the reassessment, may disagree with me, I, I'm actually happy that the commissioners did put this on the ballot. I may be in the minority in wanting a reassessment, I may be in the majority, but we will find out in November. One concern I do have, and the Scranton Times hit on this in today's paper, is that there is a lot of misinformation about reassessment out there, particularly by Commissioner Cummings, which I know myself and Commissioner Evans, or Councilman Evans have rebutted much of that over the last few, last few weeks. But, we will continue to educate the public as much as we can. I do like the idea that one of the speakers mentioned of having some sort of session, an informative session on how a reassessment would impact the residents of Scranton. And, I think, you know, educating the public is gonna be very important on this, because there is so much misinformation out there. In my review of, of, of some of the current assessments and disparities in the city, I think a reassessment would be a huge game changer for the city. It would bring tax relief to many, and more importantly, it would bring tax fairness to all. That it's not fair that there are people paying $1,000 in taxes, and there's others paying $4,000 for houses that are similar size and similar neighborhoods. I'll save my other comments for agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. First of all, my condolences as well to the Johnson family. I didn't know Mr. Johnson, but I certainly respected him for entering the political arena, as well as all he has done for the community. As far as last week's town hall meeting with the mayor, for the record, all of us attended the meeting last week. But I would, I did appreciate the fact that the mayor took the time to face the music, as the saying goes. I thought the PowerPoint presentation was well-developed, although would have been more appreciated and appropriate if it was presented in January rather than in June. I still feel there's a disconnect between the mayor and city council when it comes to this ordeal. I understand the need for the deal, I supported it, but it has been a lack of transparency and a lack of information post-closing that continues to be the problem. And the town hall meeting sadly did nothing to change that perception. At the meeting, the mayor defended the house, the in-house audit by the sewer authority versus an independent audit by the auditor general. In my opinion, that is not a defensible position. Only a true independent audit from an outside third party will be satisfactory. Additionally, if I remember correctly, the PowerPoint presentation referenced that approximately $12 million that is not accounted for was because the deal took longer than expected, and that the money was spent on mandated items and work that was fully documented. Since we've been asking for that information for over six months, it was quite a revelation that the information, according to the mayor, was fully documented. So, I'd like to send a letter to the mayor to clarify his statement, and ask that he provide that documentation as soon as possible. And on the reassessment, decision by two county commissioners to put the issue of a reassessment on the ballot in November is at its core a cop-out. Commissioner O'Teary Andy is most likely right when he said, "There is too much misinformation circulating about reassessment for it to be successful at the ballot box." In my opinion, the commissioners that voted for the referendum not only know that, they are counting on that. With that said, I know reassessment is the right thing to do for Scranton and for all of Lackawanna County. Tax equity should always be a primary objective of any elected official. If given the proper information, I truly feel the voters will look past the wrong information they have consistently been provided over the last few months. I'll continue to voice, a voice, be a voice for reassessment every chance I get, and force passage in November. And if this referendum doesn't pass, well, ironically, we will have a do-over in two years, and it's called an election. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Rongan?
Yes, thank you. Just a few comments. First, as my colleagues did, I'd like to express my condolences to the family of Richard Johnson, who passed away unexpectedly recently. Mr. Johnson was a candidate for Scranton City Council, who I got to know personally on the campaign trail. He was a gentleman, he cared about the city of Scranton, he leaves behind a wife and three children, and he will be sorely missed. I've mentioned this in the past, and I just want to bring it up again. We had a caucus tonight with the city solicitor regarding the clerical contract, and I really appreciated the city solicitor coming in and giving, giving us some background and some pertinent information on something we're gonna vote for, for final passage. I would hope, when someone from the administration comes in to discuss legislation that is important, that is on our agenda for final passage, that we would hold those caucuses out in council chambers with the television cameras running. Next week, we have, we're having a work session in the governor's room regarding the money that we're going to be spending from the sale of the sewer authority. Again, I'd like to request that we hold this in council chambers so that people can see what's going on, for no other reason than, that I really do believe that the reason that the cameras are here is so that people can see their government in action, and can see what's going on, and can understand the issues. Oftentimes, it's very difficult to explain everything in great detail. That's why when someone from the administration comes, I do appreciate that they would explain everything, but I do think there's an added benefit from having the television cameras here, again, so that people could see their, their government and their legislative branch in action. So, I would hope that next week, we would have that in here, rather than in the governor's room. Just a few citizens' concerns I'd like to speak about for a moment. We have been dealing with a few issues in the 2600 Stafford Avenue, so we've been working with the city planner and the DPW on that. We did submit a request for the 100 block of West Mountain Road, a storm drain was blocked. Neighbors in that area would also like additional lighting for the road, it's very dangerous at night. I received several concerns. In fact, a woman was here months ago about the Greenridge Senior Apartments off of Dixon Avenue. They received a tax abatement from the city of Scranton. Clover Management was the corporation back in 2012. I've spoken to several residents who live in these apartment buildings, they have many concerns. It's concerning me greatly, so I've been in contact with our city, or our solicitor, Mr. Menora, on what kind of actions these people can take. So, we'll continue to investigate and explore that. Just an update on the street lighting. This project is nearly complete. As of June 19th, the report we received, there were 40 fixtures left to retrofit throughout the city. The company that was doing the project is still progressing through completion of addressing outages that arose during construction. Most of the outages that have been reported were due to blown fuses, and they're working diligently to correct these issues. I think overall, this project has been extremely successful, and I'd like to thank the administration and city council, my colleagues, for being a part of that. I've also received several concerns from residents regarding a service line warranties of America Company sending out letters to residents in the city, offering water, service line coverage, and using the city's logo and contact information. Specifically, elderly residents are concerned that this may be a scam, and they don't understand why the, this company is using the city's logo. I would like to provide some clarification on this. The city did actually enter into a contract with this company to partner with them a few years ago. Basically, the deal was that the company could use the city's logo and information as long as the city gets a part of the profit. If you already have coverage under Pennsylvania American Water or another company, you don't need to entertain the letter, you don't need to respond to it, you can simply throw it away. Okay? But I do understand the confusion in why some people think it would be a scam. I don't think it was explained well enough by the city. Again, I'd like to make a request that the city put the demolition and condemnation list on the city's website, if possible, and update them regularly. Bless you. Regarding the town hall meeting, and I'll spend a minute on this, because I think people are getting sick of hearing me talk about the sewer authority deal, but I would agree with what Mr. Evans said, there's definitely a disconnect between the mayor and city council. And for those of you who attended the town hall meeting, you know, I was the first person to get up and speak, and when I was standing at the podium, or before I was standing at the podium, it was explained by the moderator that the mayor would have five minutes to respond to each question from the audience. I was under the assumption that for speakers, there was no time limit on how many questions you could ask. But, understanding that you should be respectful and keep your, your comments and your questions so that everybody had a chance, there was only two hours to speak. Once I got into my questions, I was cut off, told that my five minutes were up, and then I was, you know, getting screamed at by the moderator, and told to sit down. I eventually did sit down, and an elderly gentleman got up and yielded his five minutes to me, so I got back up. I got screamed at again. It didn't play that way on, on television, but I would like to say that, you know, my, my passion here is, you know, this isn't about me, it's not about Mayor Corr, right? This is about getting answers for the ratepayers. This is, is about protecting the ratepayers. That's why I'm so passionate about this whole thing. And if we look at it, as Mr. Evans had pointed out, the mayor and his administration and the sewer authority board have created this mess, this misinformation, this confusion. This could have been taken care of months ago. And then we have a town hall meeting after the fact that I believe was poorly run. So, there, there remains many additional questions. One of them, and it was brought up by a speaker before, and I'd like to ask Solicitor Menora to research the following. How did the city hire Ned Abrahamson without a contract to work on the Scranton Sewer Authority deal as special counsel? I have several concerns here, based on information revealed in a Scranton Times article this past week. I'd like to know specifically, how did the mayor and Jason Shrive, when he was city solicitor, come up with the $200,000 figure to pay Mr. Abrahamson? In the newspaper, they explained that they calculated it to be a reasonable amount for the work it entailed. I'd like to know how, how did they calculate that? Was it based on a percentage? What work did it entail? We received invoices, but we didn't receive any backup to those invoices. It was just one line saying $20,000 a month. Was it based at all on an hourly rate? And how would they know at that point what work was going to be required? You know, my concern here is that they negotiated on the You know, my concern here is that they negotiated on behalf of the city and just threw out a number of $200,000 and felt that that was a good deal. How did they arrive at that figure? I'm still confused and having a hard time understanding this whole setup. I'd also like to know, was there a letter from Mr. Abrahamson? Any correspondence detailing what exactly he would be doing? A letter from the city saying that he was hired between the city and the sewer authority? And is there any documentation at all, other than the invoices with nothing on them, as I mentioned, that we received? So I would like to ask Solicitor Menora if this was done properly. Did it have to come before city council? Because I do think there's a great deal of confusion on that. As Mr. Evans said, at the town hall meeting, the mayor explained that they have a full accounting of how the $12 million was spent. I would agree with Councilman Evans that I'd like to request, again, that detailed documentation and specifically what mandated work was performed. We've been asking for this for six months. I don't understand the hesitation to give us that information. Also, the mayor, after I was cut off, said that he would be willing to meet with me to answer any additional questions, which I do have. I would like to invite him to a public caucus in council chambers so that the public could attend, if he would be willing, so that we could clear all of this up once and for all. I continue to believe, as Mr. Evans had mentioned, that an outside agency, the auditor general, the attorney general, needs to examine this deal very closely to ensure that every penny was spent properly, legal and ethical guidelines were followed, and this deal was done with the best interest of the ratepayers in mind. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goohan. In regards to the request that we sent to the attorney general, we did receive correspondence this week that it has been forwarded to another division within the attorney general's office. I spoke to Tom Donnie, who from the attorney's office today, who just wanted a little clarification as to what we were actually seeking them to do. He wanted to make sure that our letter did not represent any indication or expectation or desire to have it investigated from a criminal standpoint. You know, as we submitted their requests, we made it specifically to say that we did not anticipate that there was criminality involved with this transaction. He is going to review, with this in mind, now looking at it from a noncriminal standpoint, perhaps a consumer protection standpoint, has to see what the attorney general's office can do with this. He did mention to me, though, that the consumer advocate, which is part of the attorney general's office, did protest the sale of the sewer authority at the PUC hearing, and their protest was that the water company was paying too much for the sewer authority. That was their protest. So in light of all the questions that we hear, that the city didn't get what they were expecting, the consumer advocate thought that the water company paid too much. So it's interesting that they're on the record for that, and we'll see where this travels. I also said to Mr. Donnie, we still would prefer the auditor general coming in. We still think that that is the best way to go at it. From listening to what one of our speakers said tonight, if the auditor general has the authority to step in without being asked, I would ask him tonight to do it tomorrow morning. If that is something that the auditor has the right to do, once again, I would request him to do it tomorrow morning, because we went through all the questions that council asked through the past few months, we went through the town hall meeting, and still tonight, we're still asking the same questions. So if the auditor general does have the ability to come in and audit that authority without a request from us, or from Dunmore, or from anywhere else, I would ask him to do that immediately, if he could. In terms of the reassessment, the decision to have the item placed on the agenda, I'm sorry, on the ballot in November is progress, slight progress, but it is progress. I do believe that the fact that council has kept this in the forefront was a factor in the commissioners deciding to put this on the ballot. I would offer Scranton City Council, in the fall, to be a focal point, a location for sides pro and con to come and represent themselves at city council. You know, we do have a forum here. I would seek to see that maybe we could have a specific caucus for a pro side or a negative side, but I would encourage people to come out and use our podium, because Scranton will be the one that will benefit the most if reassessment is completed. I did have a couple of calls this week in terms of gutters that are clogged on East Mountain, one on Burr Street, one on Derby Avenue, and I've also had a few calls about South Webster Avenue, that there was a mud situation there that needs some special help from DPW. In regards to the work session that we're going to have next week, this was something that was started, Mr. McGough started this a few years ago. The work session format in the governor's room, from speaking to my other colleagues, the majority of people prefer that the work sessions be held in the governor's room. Our guests that come here prefer to use that as the place where they would like to come. The work sessions are open to the public. The information that is generated there has been shared with anyone. And once again, as I've repeated, since I'm on city council and have been council president, to me, the information is important to get the answers, and we've been able to do that. This evening, we had our caucus with Solicitor Boils in our chambers. That's because those questions were specific questions asked by city council members. We submitted the questions in advance to her so she could be prepared, and I thought she did a very professional job this evening on presenting those answers, answered all of our questions that we had submitted, got us the information, and we can do a intelligent vote this evening. Once again, the caucuses are open. Anyone that wants to come to the caucus is welcome to come. Mr. Lockwood or some other representative from the Times is there every week. Once again, I believe that the purpose of the caucuses is to get information for council members that we can use for our information, and they are public, and Mr. Lockwood is available to get that information out. And that's all I have right now.
5B for introduction and ordinance approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license currently owned by Scanlon Incorporated, trading, doing business as Dunmore Brew House, 1400 Wheeler Avenue, Dunmore, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, license number R-1172, to Nepali Kitchen LLC for use at 732 Prospect Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5B, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license currently owned by Joan Hudak, trading, doing business as Seven Sisters Tavern, 814 Susquehanna Avenue, Oliphant, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, license number R-3527, to CFM Beer Brick LLC for use at 337 West Market Street, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5C, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance of the city council of the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, setting forth its intent to issue one or more series of general obligation bonds of the city in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $41 million pursuant to the Act of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, known as the Local Government Unit Debt Act 53 PACS, chapters 80 to 82, as amended and supplemented, finding that a private sale by negotiation is in the best financial interests of the city, determining that such bonds shall evidence nonelectoral debt of the city, specifying that such indebtedness is to be incurred to provide funds for a certain project of the city, which consists of the following: one, currently refunding the city's outstanding general obligation bond, Series B of 2003; and two, paying the costs and expenses of issuance of the bonds, setting forth the reasonable estimated remaining useful lives of the capital projects that are to be refinanced by the bonds, accepting a proposal for the purchase of such bonds at private sale by negotiation, providing that such bonds, when issued, shall constitute general obligations of the city, fixing the denomination's dated date, interest payment dates, maturity dates, interest rates, and redemption provisions, and place of payment of the principal of and interest on such bonds, authorizing specified officers of the city to contract with the paying agent for its services in connection with the bonds, setting forth the substantial form of the bonds, evidencing the debt, authorizing execution and attestation of such bonds, providing covenants related to debt service applicable to such bonds to the extent required by the Act, and pledging the full faith credit and taxing power of the city in support thereof, creating one or more sinking funds in connection with such bonds, to the extent required by the Act designating the paying agent to be the sinking fund depository, providing a covenant to ensure prompt and full payment for such bonds when due, setting forth registration and transfer provisions with respect to such bonds, authorizing the execution of one or more investment agreements by specified officers of the city, and the purchase of certain U.S. Treasury obligations or any other securities or investments in connection with the investment of proceeds of the bonds and the refunding of the city's outstanding general obligation bond, Series B of 2003, authorizing and directing specified officers of the city to do, to take, and to perform certain specified, required, necessary, or appropriate acts to effect the issuance of the bonds, including, without limitation, the preparation of a debt statement and borrowing base certificate, and the filing of specified documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, all as required by the Act declaring that the debt to be evidenced by such bonds, together with all other indebtedness of this city, will not be in excess of any applicable limitation imposed by the Act authorizing proper officers of the city to deliver the bonds upon the approval of the Department of Community and Economic Development, setting forth certain covenants, precluding the city from taking actions which would cause the bonds to become arbitrage bonds or private activity bonds, as those terms are used in the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, and applicable regulations promulgated thereunder authorizing the purchase of bond insurance and setting forth the provisions, if any, required to be included by the bond insurer, authorizing the execution of a continuing disclosure certificate, and covenanting to comply with the provisions thereof, authorizing the execution of one or more escrow agreements, binding between the city and the escrow agents named therein, in connection with the refunding of the city's outstanding general obligation bond, Series B of 2003, if necessary or desirable, approving the preparation, use, and distribution of a preliminary official statement and an official statement by the purchaser in connection with the marketing of the bonds, setting forth the city's intent to provide funds to refund the city's outstanding federally taxable general obligation pension funding bond, Series C of 2003, and the city's outstanding federally taxable general obligation bond, Series D of 2003, authorizing the execution of one or more escrow agreements binding between the city and the escrow agent named therein, in connection with the refunding of the city's outstanding federally taxable general obligation pension funding bond, Series C of 2003, and the city's outstanding federally taxable general obligation bond, Series D of 2003, authorizing the execution of one or more investment agreements by specified officers of the city, and the purchase of certain U.S. Treasury obligations or any other securities or investments in connection with the investment of monies which will be used to refund the city's outstanding federally taxable general obligation pension funding bonds, Series C of 2003, and the city's outstanding federally taxable general obligation bonds, Series D of 2003, providing, when this ordinance shall become effective, authorizing and directing the preparation, execution, and delivery of all other required documents, and the taking of all other required action, providing for severability of provisions, providing for the repealing of all ordinances or parts of ordinances insofar as the same shall be inconsistent herewith.
Could you repeat that?
[laughing]
So moved. At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5D, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
5E for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to reallocate a portion of the proceeds from the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority to refund and refinance the city's outstanding general obligation bonds, Series B of 2003, and refund the city's outstanding general obligation bonds, Series C and D of 2003.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5E, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
5F for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to grant a special encroachment permit to Another Time Restaurant LLC, doing business as AV Restaurant, to operate outdoor seating in front of its restaurant at 320 322 Penn Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5F, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
5G for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the intergovernmental cooperation for the purpose of implementation of a multi-municipal comprehensive plan by the city of Scranton and the adjacent municipalities of the boroughs of Clark Screen, Clark Summit, Dalton, Dunmore, and the townships of Glenburn, Newton, South Abington, Waverly, and West Abington.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5G, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. This legislation is simply extending one of the amendments in this intergovernmental cooperation agreement to review and amend the zoning and other land use ordinances that would have ended on November 20th, 2017. So by us voting on this, this is going to extend it for a two-year review period, an additional two years expiring on November 20th, 2019.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
5H for introduction of resolution authorizing the county of Lackawanna to make application for a grant on behalf of the city of Scranton as participant in the Scranton Abingtons Planning Association.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5H, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
5I for introduction of resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for the installation of the solar-powered, two-sided, rectangular, rapid-flashing beacon system, new crosswalk and signing. The Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority plans to have these installed as part of their safety improvement project along Broadway Street and Lackawanna River Heritage Trail intersection.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5I, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
5J for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with James Moran by and through exceptional payments, doing business as RentalOrdinance.com, to assist the Department of Licensing, Inspections, and Permits with the city of Scranton rental registration, database, compilation, and management program for a three-year period from the date of execution, with an option for a one-year renewal extension.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5J, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I think what we should do here is bring this company in for additional explanation. The legislation was pretty thorough, but I do have some concerns. The biggest one is, if we do contract with this company, and this is my understanding of the legislation, I could be wrong, but landlords will have to pay an additional fee on top of the fee they already have to pay to the city to register their property. And I believe it's an $8 fee, while minimal. I mean, I think we're doing enough damage to people who have property in the city already. So that's a concern of mine. The other concern is, within the legislation, it says that this company will use different databases to create their own database to go through with the compilation and management program. So the obvious question is, why can't the city just do this? So the obvious question is, why can't the city just do this? And what databases will this company be using? I did not see that in the legislation. So I think there needs to be further clarification for this, and if possible, I would like to invite this company in to a caucus so that they can explain it further. Thank you.
Also on the question, two responses and an answer on the first one. I reviewed, and there's only two bidders, I reviewed both of these bids extensively. The additional fee does not apply to landlords who register on their own. This is to seek out those who are not doing, not registering their units. And secondly, there are a couple different things that I did like about this bid versus the other bid. One was the cost. The other firm which actually does our vacant property registration, foreclosure registration, but their fee was, I believe, 20, I think it was $25 per unit.
Right.
For registration. So the cost at that point almost makes rental registration, you know, not even worth it because of the cost of issuance. But this firm does seem pretty reputable, they seem to do a good job with their proposal. And I do think, I certainly don't have a problem with having, you know, some additional items answered. But on the second point Mr. Gawn brought up, on the database, I think the city has proven itself time and time again inept in being able to put together a competent list of rental properties within the city. We saw it just last time when the city did send out notices to scores of people who didn't even have rental multi-units. So I've stated since day one that that needs to be done by a private firm. So I'm hoping that once and for all, this will be addressed.
Yeah, on the question, I would assume that after the three-year period, well, actually every year, that list belongs to the city, it doesn't belong to the entity that's developing it. And I think you're right, the $8 fees, the $12 fees that are additional, these are all on new registrants that haven't registered so far this year, that have been ignored, I think, pretty much for the last 25 years. So these are for the people that haven't paid and haven't registered their properties as of yet. But I do agree, you know, it's good to get some of these things fleshed out with the participants, see what his plans are, see how he's going to handle it, what some of the timeframes he's doing. But as far as the legislation, it's long overdue, I've been asking for this for quite a long time. So I'm happy that we're at this point, that we're finally moving ahead and getting the information we finally need to make this program work properly.
And I just want to add one thing. The other concern I have, and I hope this will be fleshed out, it says that the administrator will work with city employees assigned to the rental registration program to create greater efficiencies and better uniformity in managing the program. You know, I understand that, but my concern here is that, you know, that should really be the job of the director. And I wonder if this is a management problem. There's several things in here, and again, this needs to be fleshed out further, but there's several things in here I think the city could do on their own, and they don't need a third party to come in and do it. But again, we'll have these conversations over the next week or so. Thank you.
All who are in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the Council Number 104, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept on behalf of the city of Scranton this quitclaim deed conveying title to the city of Scranton, the former CSM Samuel P. Sorento U.S. Army Reserve Center located at 1801 Pine Streets, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18510, as more fully described in Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part hereof.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A. Second. On the question?
Yes, just on the question, very briefly, because we've discussed this over the last three weeks or so. I will be voting no, as I voted no on other similar pieces of legislation in the past. It still has not been determined, in my opinion, whether or not the city has the fiscal resources to maintain a building and a property like this. I also am concerned about future maintenance on the building, there has not been an analysis as far as I'm concerned on how much this will cost in the future. And again, I, you know, I understand the police department's desire to do this, I think it is actually a good idea if, you know, we didn't have the budget problems and the issues that we have maintaining the properties, the equipment and the facilities that we already have. So I'll be voting no. Thank you.
All right. On the question, I'm going to continue to press for the sale of the Astute Firehouse, and once that is sold, to put that money into a special account to pay for the recurring costs of this building for the next decade at least. So that's something we need to continue to work on as well.
Yes, on the question, I did have follow-up conversation with Mayor Cortwright, and that is indeed the plan, to use the assets from the sale of the Astute Firehouse and put into a sole account for the ongoing upkeep and use of this facility.
Okay, great.
Not to belabor the point, but I do want to point out that the cost of acquiring and maintaining this building is less than building a pole barn structure just to maintain the equipment we currently have housed in it. I would also note that after reviewing the property and going through a tour with some of my colleagues, it was in much better condition than many of us thought it was going to be. So I think it'll be a good asset acquirement for the city.
Yeah, I do believe the responsible thing to do right now is to take care of our current equipment, to make sure that it's protected, we have a lot of value there, and taking possession of this site will allow us to protect that equipment. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
I don't, we have to, yes, never, yes, sorry.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, file of the Council Number 105, 2017, amending the administrative code of the city of Scranton, Chapter 439, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 6 Residential Parking Permit Program by making changes and additions to Sections 43968 Permit Application, Section 43969 Responsibility of a Permit Holder, Section 43970 Duties of the Administrator Fee, and Section 43971 Violations and Penalties in order to bring the code up to date.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'm going to be voting against this legislation as well for a few reasons. The biggest one is there is a $5 fee for contractors who are working in areas of the city that have permit parking. Now, a $5 fee, I don't think is too much, too burdensome, but I do think that it does not make much sense to charge a contractor a $5 fee for working in an area where there's permit parking. What I think should occur is when the contractor comes to pull a permit and he explains or puts in the documentation that he's working in an area where there's permit parking, they should just give him the permit if he's going to be there temporarily. The other thing is he then has to go down to the police department, from what I understand, to pull that permit. So I just think there's, this is kind of a bureaucratic issue, it's complicated, it's involved, and I think it's unnecessary. Thank you.
I'll also be voting no for pretty much the same reasons. I do agree that it's, especially for $5, it's so much of a hassle and it's much more effort than it's worth to accomplish the goal of allowing contractors to park in permit zones when they're working in a permit zone, such as the Hill section. The simple solution to me is to have them put a copy of the permit on the dash of the vehicle outside of the house they're working on. I don't like the idea of giving a temporary permit where they could go wherever they want, but, you know, just simply putting a copy of that permit in their dash in front of the house they're working on seems like a very simple fix for me.
On the question, while I agree with my colleagues, I have to say that this is partially because some contractors were getting tickets because they were just parked in front of a house, and they shouldn't have gotten tickets because they have a, you know, their name on the side of a truck. Common sense would dictate that they're working there, but common sense doesn't always prevail. The chief originally wanted a $15 fee, and I discussed it with him and got it down to a $5 fee. So as much as I hate fees, I view this more of as a reduction than actually a new fee. Also, I think what we're talking about doing is, makes sense as far as what Councilman Gawn and Rogan said, but I just don't think we're there yet. So this is a, you know, maybe we can get there at some point where we can be more efficient and have it included as part of the permit process, but as they say, we're not there yet, so maybe we just have to go along with this for the time being.
Yeah, I believe that this is something that's going to have to be monitored and reevaluated for its effectiveness. As we talk about fees and their effectiveness, I think this is something that is a classic to see if there's an easier or better way to do it.
Yeah, this fix is one of the needs at hand, but it might create a hassle on the other end, but it's certainly not something that, once we initiate, we have to live with. We can go ahead and adjust and make better as needed. So I'll be voting yes for this.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 167, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Koharchik Construction for the city of Scranton Traffic Signal Replacement at North Main Avenue and Parker Street.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 168, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Whitmer Public Safety Group Incorporated, doing business as Officer Store, for 2017 ammunition for the city of Scranton Police Department.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 169, 2017, appointment of Go Paul B. Patel, 939 Quincy Avenue, Scranton, PA 18510, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Sewer Authority, effective June 7, 2017. Mr. Patel will be replacing Patrick J. Hughes, who resigned May 15, 2017. Mr. Patel will fill the unexpired term of Patrick J. Hughes, whose term is scheduled to expire on January 4, 2022.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'm going to have to vote against this appointment tonight. This is nothing personal against Mr. Patel. I'm sure he's a gentleman and has the best intentions, but last week I made a motion to invite Mr. Patel in to a public caucus and ask him questions about the Scranton Sewer Authority, the transaction between the Sewer Authority and Pennsylvania American Water, and most importantly, whether or not he would support inviting the Auditor General in to audit the transaction. Mr. Patel, who attended his first meeting, abstained from all of the votes, which I disagree with, I don't think that that is acceptable. And then he did not, obviously did not vote on the Auditor General coming in, which I think is unacceptable, and I don't think is in the best interest of the ratepayers or the taxpayers of Scranton and Dunmore. So again, this is nothing personal against Mr. Patel, but I do think we should have invited him in because of all of the things going on over the past six months with the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 17D, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to execute and enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the city of Scranton Clerical Workers and Local Lodge Number 2462 affiliated with District 1 of the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, AFL-CIO, in accordance with the terms and provisions of a memorandum of understanding with an effective date of January 1, 2016, and ratified by the membership.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, as far as this being a good four-year contract for the city, I would agree, it holds a line on pay increases, it creates a certification process for housing inspectors, which is long overdue, it also creates job descriptions where none existed before. So from that perspective, it's probably a good contract. But to veer off on a philosophical tangent for a moment, sometimes contracts are not about what happens within that four-year window of the contract. It's beyond that. The fact that there is no language that addressed an optional defined contribution pension plan for existing employees, or language that required all new hires to be part of a defined contribution plan or 401K plan, simply means that this important conversation has now been postponed for four more years. It is vital that every contract that the city negotiates provides a framework that goes beyond the contract period to control legacy costs such as pensions. As we begin to exit Act 47, I fear we have missed this opportunity. However, we learned tonight in our caucus this evening that the Class 2A city designation has reared its ugly head again and is silent on defined contribution pension plans. Therefore, as written, we may not be able to offer a 401K-type plan to city employees currently employed. So I would ask Attorney Manora, I know we're getting off subject here, but I'd like, while we're on it, Attorney Manora to review this section of the Class 2A code with the intent of how we go about fixing this, so we can move ahead and start looking forward. I discussed this last week at the PEL meeting, that he had a public meeting, about getting 401K plans for the non-union employees, so I think that that's something we need to look at and make it happen sooner or later. I'll probably vote for this only because it's not in here in the language, because they couldn't put it in the language, but I would have preferred if we knew this before, we could have did something about it and maybe, you know, had this taken care of well before final ratification of this contract.
Yes, on the question, I'll be voting for this contract tonight. I'd like to thank the clerical employees for agreeing to take no raise for the first two years of this contract. I don't agree with everything in here, but I believe that overall, it's a fair contract to both the city and the employees, and one that falls within the Pennsylvania Economy League's expenditure limits.
Echoing some of the items that my colleagues mentioned, I would like to commend the city and the negotiating team for negotiating this contract, especially the fact, as Councilman Gawn mentioned, it's actually no pay increase for three years, there is a bonus in the third year, but these employees are going to go two years without a pay increase, a small bonus in year three, and a small raise in year four. So that does mirror what many in the private sector have been experiencing as well. I wish the city were in a much better financial position where raises could be afforded to be given out every year, but my position on pay increases has been pretty well-known over the years, so I will support this contract.
Yes, on the question, in any kind of contract negotiations, you know it was handled correctly when both sides walk away without everything they wanted, and I'm going to say that that is one of the cases here. As city-friendly it is, there's also some things that definitely help out our clerical union employees, and that goes to both parties. That handled negotiations, to Councilman Rogan's point, salaries are well under control and, dare I say, under private standards as far as the cost of living increases. But then on the other side, to Mr. Evans' point, there was pensions and healthcare that remained. So like I said, both parties didn't get everything they wanted, but there was enough for both teams to leave the table happy.
Yeah, I think the important thing here to take note of is that this contract was negotiated. Both parties sat down at the table, discussed their ideas, shared ideas, it took a while to get it completed, but I think it's a testament to the commitment of the administration and of and of our unionized employees that they can come to a financial agreement that keeps them working, keeps them paid, but also does not become a burden to the taxpayers. We were able to avoid any arbitration, and I think it's representative of a new attitude that exists in the city between management and our workforce, that they want to make Scranton succeed financially, and I do congratulate both parties for doing that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 171, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a service agreement by and between MedTrak Services, LLC, a Missouri limited liability company, and the city of Scranton to provide pharmacy benefit management services.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7G. Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
Before we adjourn, I would just like to remind everyone that next Thursday, council will hold a work session with the business administrator to discuss the issuance and refunding of the city's general obligation bond. That work session will be held in the governor's room commencing at 4:30 p.m. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.